Great, welcome. Why don't I go ahead and call us to order? I'd like to call to order the Planning and Transportation Commission Regular Meeting for April 21st, 2025. Welcome to everyone who's here in person and also online. Thank you for coming. First, we'd like to, oh, second, we'd like to note that there are no Assembly Bill 2449 teleconference requests, meeting agenda item two. Vice Chair Garvey is not present tonight, but she is excused. And then we'll go on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're on to item four for roll call.
Commissioner Anand.
Present.
Commissioner Bundy.
Present.
Commissioner Castaneda.
Present.
Vice Chair Garvey is excused, and Chair Clements. Present, thanks. First, we'll start with a public comment period regarding topics that are not on tonight's agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, which is California Government Code Section 54954.2. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or to have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is anyone in person here tonight? Would anyone like to make a public comment? If so, please fill out a speaker card. If not, that's fine, seeing none. Lynette, is there anyone with hands raised on Zoom to make a comment on tonight's public comment?
There are none at the moment.
Okay. We'll just give it another 30 seconds in case someone changes their mind online. Again, public comment is for items not on tonight's agenda. You're welcome to make announcements or bring anything else up that you would like. Lynette, any hands?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Then I need a motion to close the public comment.
I move to close the public comment.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thanks. Andrea with roll call.
Commissioner Anand.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda.
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey is excused, and Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. Item six on tonight's agenda, I should have read the public comment information, sorry about that, is actually before this, it's approval of minutes. And on the printed agenda, item 6A, it's approval of the April 2nd, 2025 Planning and Transportation Commission Special Meeting Minutes. And I wanted to see if any of my commissioners had comments or suggested edits. Okay. I did have a couple of items to note. This was on the Northeast Area Specific Plan item. The first speaker, Richard Crone, my notes showed that he requested that the city improve its monitoring of compliance with tree removals, that it was the city's role to do that. We could add that. And then also, public comment on the specific plan proposal, Sam Hartsburg's comments, second to the last word, I think there was a typo there, it reads pollution, I believe it should be polluted. Okay. With that, I go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended with those corrections from the April 2nd, 2025 Planning and Transportation Commission Special Meeting. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anand.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda.
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey is excused, and Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Onto our main item for tonight. Item seven is a public hearing. For a public hearing, staff will present a report on the history and physical features on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. If applicable, the applicant may make a presentation. Therefore, thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, in the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speakers form, thank you to the one person who did that already, located in the rear of the room, and handed to the recording secretary before addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting's being recorded and identify yourself, and this will assist staff in preparing the minutes. If we, I think I need to read the whole item. There we go. So, tonight, we are hearing the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences. Bear with me for a minute, I have to read this. 961 to 967, 987, 1003, 1011, 1015, 1057, and 1075 Commercial Street. And 915, 921, 1015, 1055, and 1063 Old County Road. APNs 046, 162, 010. 046, 162, 210. 046, 162, 270. Al may want to take a seat. 066, 046, 162, 280. 046, 162, 290. 046, 184, 090. 046, 184, 110. 046, 184, 120. 046, 184, 280. 046, 184, 290. And, last but not least, 046, 184, 300. This is a public hearing to consider recommending that the City Council certify the environmental impact report and adopt the plan development zoning, the plan development permit, and the development agreement, and consider approving the tentative parcel map, the transportation demand management plan, grading and dirt hall certificate, the master sign program, the protected tree removal, and design review to develop the Alexandria life science research and development campus. Excellent. So with that, I'll turn it over to Al Savay, the head of our Community Development Department, to start the presentation, and then staff will make further presentation. I did want to note that tonight, we're going to be taking, we're going to hear about the project, and then we're going to be taking comments just on the transportation pieces so that we can have online or in person our transportation consultant to answer any questions that may come up. So, bear with me, and we'll go over to Al for a presentation. Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Al Savay, I'm the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of San Carlos, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Before I get started, what I'd like to do is make a few introductions. We have a number of people here from the city staff, and we have some supporting consultants, and we also have a number of folks from the applicant team. We have Lisa Costa Sanders, our principal planner, Anna Shimko, our city's outside legal counsel, Rebecca Ald, our SEQA environmental consultant, of course Greg Rubens, our city attorney, and virtually, we have Mark Spencer, our traffic consultant, and that's the city team, and you can, of course, ask any questions of our city team this evening. From the applicants, we have Trune Jordan, who will be a speaker this evening, Maura Finsey, Chris Ye, and Toretia Nemeth, and they're all from Alexandria Real Estate. We have Margot Bradish, their legal counsel, and Manon Shah, the architect for the project. Virtually, we have Nick Walczek, who is an environmental consultant. We have Tim Kirby, landscape architect, and Jeff Tarantino, who is a civil engineer. And so again, all these people are available to answer questions of the chair or the council or the commission, rather. So tonight, I wanted to kind of back up a little bit and talk about the project and provide a little bit of historical context for the project as you reflect on tonight's materials and the presentations that you'll be hearing this evening. So the plans were submitted back in 2020, so it's been about five years since we first started reviewing this project, and the plans have evolved. And I'll talk about, a little bit about the evolution of the project over time. There's been a new plan for the area that this project is in called the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan, and I'll talk a little bit about that. And every project that comes through the City of San Carlos, our staff reviews the project and provides comments and works with the applicant team to make modifications to make sure the project fits into our community. So, this is the general, city's general plan land use map, and so what I'm going to kind of do is go, start from a bird's eye view, and we'll kind of drill down until we get to the project site itself. And so what you see here is the city's land use map, and the area that's hatched in red there is the East Side Innovation District area. And the purple and blue areas that you see there are commercial and industrial areas of San Carlos, and about approximately 20% of our land area is dedicated to industrial and commercial lands. And that has really sustained our community in terms of the activity. We have a lot of businesses out there, and that has really sustained our community significantly for many years, and especially since World War II, when everybody came back and in the area industrialized. And what you'll see out there, a lot of times, is lower buildings, you know, single-story buildings that have been dedicated to distribution and repair service needs in the community and manufacturing. And so, the area, this area of San Carlos, and San Carlos as a destination or a place has had a unique size and scale, and the industrial fabric of that area was really a central location on the peninsula. It's 25 miles from San Francisco, and 20, we are 25 miles from San Jose as well. And so it's been really a fertile ground for startups, and especially in the last few years in the life sciences and biotechnology arena. So for many years, these uses, the biotech and life sciences, have had a quiet presence in the City of San Carlos. So back in 2016, a pioneering developer called Wendy Hill came to the City of San Carlos and decided that it would be a good place to build a Class A office building. And Class A, when I refer to Class A, I mean the best kind of office building where you get the highest lease rates and it's really good architecture. And at the time, it was the biggest office proposal we've ever had in the city, and it still, I believe, remains that way today. So that was approved back in 2016, and then Alexandria Real Estate Investment Trust saw that and acquired this project from that developer and reskinned it for biotechnology and life science. And it was a pioneering project that quickly leased up, and other developers saw what Alexandria did and saw their reputation and felt like, well, if they did it, then this would be a really good place to do business. And so they started to look at our area here, and as I noted, these lands, these areas were built up after World War II, a lot of manufacturing, industrial uses out there, and nothing had changed too much. So what we had over a very short period of time after Alexandria pioneered this project, we had dozens of acres in this area here that you see on the screen that were bought up by these developers, including an additional 25 acres across the street from that development that I just showed you. And our city council at that time, as you can see, there's almost 3 million square feet of new development. And our city council at that time saw the need for a holistic vision for the area. It was just happening so fast. And so how are we going to accommodate all this new development? And there's so many things to consider. And so they tasked the city staff with coming up with a new viable approach, a new plan for this area. So we, at that time, we worked with the Planning Commission and the city council on a new plan. And that was the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. And this shows you the boundaries, kind of a better picture of the boundaries of the plan. And just above Britton Avenue, there you see the blue there, that's Polgus Creek, and just above that, in the gray, is the Alexandria project. So this site is located really in the heart of the Innovation District Plan, and it's adjacent to a pedestrian undercrossing that we have going across Old County Road into El Camino and across into downtown. And the closest residential uses to the site are located along El Camino Real, which is 300 feet to the west, and then about 600 feet, you have residential, single-family homes behind El Camino Real. The greater east San Carlos single-family neighborhood is approximately 1,300 feet to the north, and the site is surrounded by that commercial, industrial, and many retail uses that we've had over there for many years. So here's the vision plan, this kind of lays the whole thing out. And in 2022, the city council adopted the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. And this plan has served as a guidepost for determining whether a project meets the findings for approval as set out in our municipal code, our zoning, and our guidelines. And the vision plan is proposed to be used at the very beginning stages of the project. And Alexandria watched as this plan was developed over time, and they were carefully considered how they would fit their plan into this area, but also how they would meet the standards and the guidelines of this new plan. And so it helps to conceptualize and program the alignment of these new, of new projects, not just the Alexandria project, but other projects in the area. And so let's take a closer look now, kind of, we're kind of flying closer to the project site now. It's about 25 and a half, almost 25 and a half acres of property there. And up toward industrial, you see those buildings there in the, in the red box there. And that used to be L3 Communications and Joby Engineering leases a part of that building there. And the area that you see that's now dirt used to be the Kelly Moore Paint Manufacturing Facility there. And to the north, you have industrial, to the west, you have Old County Road. Polgus Creek runs along one side of it, and you also have commercial on the, on the northern side of the project. So, as I noted in the beginning, the project has evolved over time. And so what you see is the two different projects, or rather, on the right-hand side, you see the project as it came in, in 2020. And on the left-hand side of the screen, you see the project as it is today. And when the first, the project first came in, and when we start evaluating things, we look at traffic, we look at the environmental issues, we look at, you know, site cleanup, we look at what's there, the context of the area, we have a creek there, we look at the context, how you get on and off the freeway, what, how it relates to the local transportation network and things like that. So at first, we had some concerns about some of the things that were laid out in this, in this project. For instance, on Old County Road, where it shows PG1 there, you have the parking garage. And one of the things that we initially were concerned about was the size and scale of the, of the parking garage on Old County Road, and how that was highly visible from El Camino Real and Old County Road, the height of the building at that time, and the ground floor, because we were concerned, when you have a thoroughfare, as you face the community, you want the building to be open and transparent on the ground floor. We would prefer not to have back-of-house uses at the ground floor where people walk and where people view the building. And so we had this, and we talked to Alexandria for a long time about this, and it's about, it was about 300 feet wide, and I like to think of things in kind of football field distances, and that's about the length of a football field. So that was one concern we had. We also had concern about the entrances and exits for PG1. Some of the main turning movements and the main entrance and exit points were right at Al, Old County Road. So we talked to them about moving the majority of the traffic over to Commercial Street and to lessen the traffic on Old County Road. They also, they listened to us, and so on those two points, they lowered the height of the building, and as you can see on the left-hand side, they turned the building and elongated it and reduced the width of the building along Old County Road. In addition, they heard us when we talked about the ground floor and how it addresses the street, and they put a gym or some other kind of amenity along that, that frontage there. So now it has glass, you can see in and out at night, there's light, so that would be an amenity space along the frontage of the building. They lowered the height and stepped the, the parking garage away from, from the community. So now it fits. They also, as I noted, moved some of the entrance and exit points over to Commercial Street. Some of the other things that we were concerned about on Commercial Street, you see PG2 on the right-hand side, and that was another parking garage, and the, and the concern was that same issue with regard to how does the project address our community? Does it face our community or not? And, and so we, we talked a lot about that. On before as well, there were some back-of-house mechanical equipment along Commercial Street. And as you can see, there's a lot of trees along in that first version in 2020. We were real happy with the way that the street appearance was, was forming, and I think Alexandria really got it. They made real wide sidewalks there, we've got some bike lanes along there and a lot of landscaping, but we were concerned about how this project addressed the community. And so on the left-hand side, what you'll see is they backed that building away, that one there, and they created a large open space along our Commercial Street frontage. They moved the parking garage inward into the campus and put an office building out on Commercial Street. Again, that, that transforms the, the street, it adds vitality and activity, and when you walk down the street, you, you feel like it's, it's really a part of the fabric of our community. And so, and they also widened the area along Polgus Creek, and throughout the whole discussion, one of the things that we, we talked about is making sure that these fantastic amenities that they have provided for this campus, the community green and all the plazas and walkways and, and other outdoor spaces would be available for the public, and they agreed to that. And, and so that's where it stands today in terms of some of the changes that were made, those are just some of the changes that were made over the years, but I wanted to point those out to, to show the evolution of this project and how we've worked together to come up with what you're seeing this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Costa Sanders.
Thank you. Good evening. Lisa Costa Sanders, Principal Planner. I'll walk you through the project requests and entitlements. And there's quite a few, as you heard from the title of this project. So the application is to develop a new research and development life science campus with six new life science buildings, two parking structures, tenet amenity space, associated landscape, as well as on and off-site improvements. The entitlements include a plan development zoning, plan development plan, development agreement, design review and sign program, tentative parcel map, grading and dirt hall, tree removal, transportation demand management plan, and an environmental impact report. So this is the site plan of the proposed project, as Al was walking through for you. So this is the site plan of the proposed project, as Al was walking through for you. The project places six life science research and development buildings on the site with substantial landscape open space. The life science buildings range in height from five stories at 82 feet to the roofline and 100 feet to the mechanical screen. Six-story buildings are 98 feet to roofline, 116 to the mechanical screen. And then the tallest building is seven stories with 114 feet at the roofline and 132 feet to the mechanical screen. The parking garage one located along Old County Road includes one level of below-grade parking and five levels above grade with a height of 43 feet. And parking garage two, that's located more towards the center of the campus, includes one level below grade, eight levels above grade at a height of 74 feet, six inches. The applicant does propose to develop the campus over a phasing period. The development agreement does include a 15-year timeline. So I'll start on the left with Phase One. That includes Building One, five stories, a little over 300,000 square feet in area. That's located at the corner of Commercial Street and Industrial Road. And then Building Two is five stories, 201,810 square feet, located along Commercial Street. There's also 41 surface parking spaces along Industrial Road and 970 surface parking spaces at the corner of Old County Road and Commercial Street. And this is considered a temporary parking area. During the Phase One, they will also improve Commercial Street, as well as a new traffic signal will be installed at Old County Road and Commercial Street. Phase Two, at the center of this plan, you see at the top of your screen is Building Three. That's seven stories with 330,600 square feet, located along Industrial Road. Building Four is adjacent to Parking Garage Two. So it's a little hard to see. Yeah, right there. Thanks, Andrea. And that building is seven stories, 137,962 square feet. Then Building Seven, at the center of the campus, is proposed as an amenity building, and that would be a single-story building. Parking Garage Two, also at the center of the campus, has 1,980 parking spaces. So once Phase Two gets built with that parking structure, now you've got enough parking to serve that whole center of the campus. So now they can eliminate the temporary paved parking lot, surface parking level. Polgus Creek will also be improved during Phase Two. And then the last phase, Phase Three, is really that bottom of the plan, closest to Old County Road. So that includes Building Five, which is seven stories, about 322,000 square feet. Building Six is six stories with 310,000 square feet, and that's at the corner. Building Eight is the smaller amenity building that Al mentioned that's right adjacent to Parking Garage One. And that would contain some active uses at the ground floor. The parking garage is proposed with five levels above grade and one level below grade parking. Okay, so for the plan development zoning, plan development plan, as the commission is aware, this sets site-specific zoning standards. So when you read that plan development ordinance, you noticed that all the development standards and the zoning, underlying zoning, would apply except for these specific areas. So it would allowing, exceeding that 50-foot underlying height, as I explained what the heights are of each building. The floor area, the maximum floor area for this site is 1.0. It's a very low floor area. The request is a total building area of about 2.4 million square feet. That does include the above-grade parking structures. So that would be a total floor area for the site of 2.18. And that's how San Carlos calculates floor area. It does include the above grade. If you were just to look at the research and development building area, though, it's about 1.6 million floor area of 1.43. So it is a bit lower. A lot of the other projects that were approved a couple of years ago were in the 2.0 floor area range. And then the uses, all uses that are allowed in the heavy industrial zoning district, tenants would be able to require, comply with the biosafety regulations that the city council put into effect a couple of years ago. That only allows BSL Level One and Two. And then we have a conditional use permit requirement for any future childcare, and that's due to the airport land use compatibility study requirements. Okay, so you're recommending body on the plan development zoning, plan development plan, but you're the approval body on the design review. So I'll walk through that a little bit for you. We're looking for design review for the first two buildings of the campus that are included in Phase One. So this is Building One, the view at the corner of Industrial Road and Commercial Street. This is the five-story building, about 300,000 square feet. The building is set back about 27 feet from Industrial Road and a little over 30 feet from Commercial Street. It's proposed with glass, dark gray metal panels, designed with undulating terraces, warm-toned metal panel soffits to lighten the facade. And I'll let the architect get into more detail on the design for you. And then the second building, this is actually the view from the interior paseo. So this is Building Two. This is located along Commercial Street, proposed at five stories. The building designed with glass, with scalloped warm-toned metal panels, and includes multi-height terraces with warm wood-toned metal panels. What Alexandria does a little different from some other developers is each building on their campus has a unique architectural style. But there are some elements that really kind of pull it all together, some unifying elements. So the action tonight, if you're prepared to take it, would be to approve the design review for the first two buildings. And as I indicated, recommend on the plan development zoning. In the future, when they're ready to come back for Phase Two and Phase Three, they'll need to come back before the planning commission for design review of those buildings. Okay. Also proposing a tentative parcel map. So there's an existing 11 parcels on the site, as you heard from reading the accessory parcel numbers. What they're going to do is create eight new parcels, essentially one parcel for each building. And this has been reviewed by our engineering staff, and we found that there's adequate vehicle, pedestrian, and fire access to public streets. We're also required to prepare a transportation demand management plan, and the goal here is to reduce trips by at least 20%. This has been reviewed internally by our senior traffic engineer, as well as the traffic consultant you have on the call today, for, under our SEQA analysis. The site is within a walking distance to the train station, about a 13-minute walk, three-minute bike ride. And I measured that to about the center of the campus. They will have carpool, vanpool incentives, matching programs, transportation coordinator, membershipandcommute.org, or a transportation management association when formed. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. They've also designed the site to make sure that there's good drop-off locations at each of the streets. And there's a lot of onsite amenities as well. As part of the plan development zoning, you would be recommending approval of the master sign plan. So this does include campus monument signs, building identification signs, internal wayfinding signs for both vehicles and pedestrians. And then the tenant signs, they're proposing a maximum of 150 square feet per sign and no more than two signs per facade. And this is similar size that was approved at the other Alexandria building at 825835 Industrial. No more than two signs per facade. The planning commission is also required to approve the grading and dirt haul when it's more than 1,000 cubic yards. This haul route takes advantage of kind of the cloverleafs at the freeway to avoid going by the single-family residential neighborhood that's adjacent along Industrial Road. And so no matter if they're coming from north or south, they'll use those cloverleafs at Holly Street and then access the site via Britton, Old County Road, Commercial Street. And as Al indicated, we do review the project for compliance with the Eastside Innovation District Plan. I've listed the measures here. It's also outlined in your staff report. But they really did take a lot of effort to make sure this project really does fit in and fits the vision of the community. And I wanted to go over a little bit more about the open space improvements. So there's kind of a series of open spaces. At the top of the screen, there's what's called a paseo. And that's also doubling as fire access to the buildings. But it's got landscaping seating, outdoor workspaces. There may be some cafe seating, trellis area. The bottom of that paseo kind of runs east to west. So when you're getting closer to Old County Road, there's a section where they've got some pickleball courts, half-basketball, and some ping-pong tables. And then, as Al indicated, they moved back that one building on Commercial Street to create this arrival plaza. And it's, it's of substantial size to have really nice outdoor space. You can maybe have some food trucks come in there if you wanted to program it. But they've got a lot of landscaping, some seating. Would likely be a good location for an art feature. And then, as we talked about a little bit with the creek trail, and I'll show you some more details on that, the whole length will be a publicly accessible creek trail that'll run along the, the creek side there with a raised boardwalk and some native planting. And you can either walk or ride a bike on that trail. And then the central green, that area also doubles for stormwater retention. So there's a very large underground stormwater capture that'll really help if there's any overflow events at Polgus Creek. Also a raised lawn area with seating, wood deck, trellis, lounge chairs, landscaping, and they've got a chess field. And here's the Polgus Creek improvement, so you can see a section of that. They are widening Polgus Creek. And the proposal is to, as part of the community benefits package, to improve both sides of the creek. So their requirement would be to maintain and improve their side of the creek. But as community benefits, they're also offering to improve the other side as well. So it would be fully improving the creek by widening it, removing any invasive plants, improving flood mitigation by widening the creek, and also indicated having that flood mitigation zone, and then the raised creek trail. So starting with Polgus Creek, and then there's the flood mitigation zone. There's another area for planting, and then the central green, and then the cherry grove. And then the off-site improvements, this really, they took the page out of the Eastside Innovation District Plan with the proposed improvements on Commercial Street. So this really lines up with what the plan had envisioned. So you see Commercial Street is that first section, two lanes. And then there's a small planted, planted area that's a buffer. It's also for the green infrastructure, storm drains, a bike path about 10 feet wide, another planting area with a row of trees, and then a sidewalk, and then another planting area with another row of trees. So when you're looking down Commercial Street, you're really going to see this double-aisle of trees. And the building's set back about 40 feet. With projects that require a change in zoning, when they're asking for that additional building area, we evaluate those for community benefits. So we do have a fiscal analysis that comes in and takes a look at what that additional benefit to the project is of the change in zoning. And we're able to work with Alexandria to have a fiscal contribution of $43 million. That will be paid over the three phases of the project. So at building permit issuance of Phase One will be the first payment. I think it's about $10 million. And then it does increase in the later phases. In addition, we're going to give them credit for several items. The off-site creek improvements that I mentioned, the creek side trail. And then they're going to assist us with the formation of a transportation management association. And that's so you can really have coordinated transportation management. You've got a presentation on TDM measures in parking, and I bet you they talked about it. Great, you know what I'm at. So they'll be setting that up, setting up the organization. It'll come before the city council and probably the planning commission for some direction. And then all the other projects that have been approved recently are required to participate in the TMA. Also giving them a credit for some onsite art. And then they made a school district contribution of $2 million. So that total is over $50 million. In addition to the fiscal contributions, there's some other items that we did not assign value to, but we certainly have recognized it in the development agreement. Public access to all of the open space areas. There will be a café, restaurant onsite that will be publicly accessible, as well as restrooms. Amenity space, if built, would be available to the city and nonprofits up to 12 times a year at no cost, and an additional six times a year at a reduced rate. They will also provide 60 public parking spaces on nights and weekends, open to the public. And then for environmental, plum the buildings and landscaping for recycled, future recycled water, as well as solar on the parking structures. And with the development agreement, you typically lock in impact fees. And so these are all the impact fees. We've estimated them based on the building sizes that we know today. So how much would come in in each phase based on the impact fees in effect today? There are some cost of living escalators that are already established in those impact fees, and those would carry forward with the development agreement. We are anticipating increasing and changing the transportation impact fee very soon. It's getting a little dated now, and there's a lot of projects that we need to include in that fee. So we were able to work with Alexandria, and they've agreed to a maximum TIF increase in the future of no more than one and a half times the current fee. So we thought that was quite reasonable. Okay. We also prepared an environmental impact report to analyze the project that was issued for a 60-day public review period from July 2024 through September. The final EIR address is the revised projects. As Al showed you, the projects evolved. So when we released the EIR, we had evaluated the project, and they were able to incorporate some changes. We found that the changes weren't substantial enough to require recirculation. We were able to incorporate that in the final EIR, as well as respond to public comments that were received. The mitigation monitoring and reporting plan is attached to that SEQA resolution. So the project will not have an impact with implementation of the mitigation measures. And those relate to air quality, both during construction as well as operation. Biological nesting bird survey will be required, as well as some measures to protect during the creek work. Cultural resources, if anything's discovered during construction. Hazardous, they need to implement a remediation plan for the contaminated soil, excuse me, groundwater, as well as the building demolition. And then they'll need to implement the transportation demand management plan with some monitoring. Public notice was mailed occupants and property owners within 300 feet of the site February, and then published in the newspaper. As that meeting was continued a couple of times, we did do a renotice. So that was mailed on March 31st and published on April 1st for this meeting. We did receive one comment letter, and that comment letter is included in your packet with a response concern expressed with site contamination, noise, air quality, as well as additional traffic. And these are the motions when we get to that point. But now I will hand it off to the applicant team. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi, I'm Toon Jordan with Alexandria Real Estate Equities. Thank you for having us tonight. We are very excited and very proud to present this project to you. It's been in the works for a long time, so we are all looking forward to sharing this with you. So tonight, we'll do a quick introduction about Alexandria, touch on the successful project that are existing buildings right now, 825835 Industrial Road. And then I'll turn over to Manan to walk you through the master plan and Phase One design. So Alexandria, we've been in the business for about 30 years, and we are the first real estate investment trust to focus on the life science industry. We are the leader in this area. Life science real estate development is our core business. Science is what we believe in, and it is what's in our DNA. We are a nationwide company, and, but we run pretty lean. Locally, there are 45 of us in the office. And the team that you see today will be the team that you can, you can expect to see in the future. We are a trusted partner within the community and within our tenants' community as we were a long-term holder and owner-operator of the buildings. And at Alexandria, we believe in sustainable design. We delivered the first two all-electric life science building, or commercial life science buildings, in Northern California. And the first one was 751 Gateway. Second one is 230 here at Tubman in Millbrae. And both buildings are 100% leased and fully occupied. As I mentioned earlier, we operate the buildings on most of our campuses ourselves. And because of that, we really focus on providing the amenity offerings for each campus that tailored to the community and the tenants. And, you know, depending on what the market demand is at that time, here are some examples of the quality amenity spaces that we provide to the tenants and the, the community. Here is 825835 Industrial Road. Hopefully, you are familiar with our existing campus. And it is a highly amenitized campus and well-used and well-liked by the community and our tenants. We completed it and delivered it in 2021. Since then, actually, before we delivered these buildings, they were 100% leased. The community is familiar with our buildings. Some of the city staff has used our facilities in the past. So it's been well-designed and usually... So it's been well-designed, and usually, everybody seems to be happy with the campus. And if you've been to our campus, you'll see the artwork throughout the campus that celebrates the history of the site. We usually honor and celebrate the origin story through art, and we hope to do that with our Phase Two project. So with that, I will turn over to Manon.
Thanks, Toon. Good evening, Chair Clements and Commission. My name's Manon Shah. I'm a principal at Genzer, and we're the design architects for the project. I'm excited to share the plans. I'm going to do my best not to repeat too much of what Alan and Lisa thoughtfully described of the project, but we're really excited about sharing some of the details with you here. As was mentioned, to the south of the Phase One development site, we're talking about 25 acres of side area here for the Phase Two development. And, you know, I think Al really mentioned our alignment with the vision plan here, and we're really supportive ultimately of the East Side Innovation District, and we've taken a lot of care to focus on the corners of the development, our pedestrian connectivity, roadways, the sort of arterial infrastructure of the site to really achieve the city's goal for development for the entire district. So we think that we're being a really good neighbor here within the district. As you can see here, those points are really illustrated in this site plan. We support the character of industrial, as well as integrating multimodal streets around the site, and you can see the pedestrian connections through the site towards Polgus Creek and along Commercial, along the Tree Alley that runs north and south. So there's, there's quite a bit of integration and a real sense of perosity within the campus We've also, you know, looked and tried to draw inspiration for the, for the site planning and the architectural design really from the natural landscape of St. Carlos. It's a very interesting and dynamic natural landscape with the tidal marshes all the way up through the mountains, and so there's, there's a lot to draw from and to relate to relative to the design of the project. So when we began to think about how to best organize the site, we really came up with, with three distinct planning zones within the site. The first is the Linear Park, which occurs along Commercial Street, and it's really our front door. It's, it's the most social and active zone. It's where the Tree Alley goes all the way from the north, all the way to the south, and connects the campus to Laurel Street in downtown St. Carlos. So this, this space is really meant to be warm, natural, and very welcoming to the campus. Then Polgus Creek is really the primary recreational zone for the campus. So you've got, you know, this, this entire area is really designed to center around the ecology of the creek. We've got our amenities and activities that spell out into the large open space that happens in the center of the campus, as well as the, the natural trail that happens along the creek edge that we'll be installing. So there's a lot of care being taken to that edge to allow the, the public to access the creek. And then central to the entire master plan is the Paseo, and this is really the internal center to the life science campus. And so this is where buildings open up. You have amenities like cafes, open space. As was mentioned, it's also our fire access roadway through the middle of, of the campus, but it's really, again, a north-south link throughout the campus.
Eastwest.
Eastwest link. Thank you. Sort of, you know, go north, south, east, west. Yes, that's perfect, diagonally across the site, as it were. So you can begin to see the, the innovative sort of science campus and how this begins to really take shape and life. It's, it's really a grouping of buildings and amenities and garages that are situated well within a landscape, and really focused on making this a, a really healthy ecosystem onsite. So we've, we've taken great care here to raise buildings, you know, as much as five feet to keep them away from sea level rise, which is, which is, you know, really important to the project. We're assuming PV of, sorry, PV over the garages, along with EV charging in those, in those garages, and high-performance, all-electric life science buildings, really to, to think about sustainability and reduction of energy use. And you'll see how we're beginning to integrate thinking around energy use and solar shading in the, in the architecture of the buildings as well. When we thought about campus arrival and circulation, we worked really closely with planning staff to think about roadways and entries primarily off Commercial Street, with some secondary entrances off of Industrial and Old County. So you can begin to see here how the primary circulation arteries for vehicular access work on the site. And then you can see three primary drop-off locations that are circled in blue, the primary one being in that front Arrival Plaza along Commercial Street mid-block, and two secondary drop-off locations, one on Old County, and, and one on Industrial. And then we really thought about how we can create a character site planning that, that allowed for a really vibrant pedestrian experience. This is a really landscape-forward campus. We created those welcoming points of arrival in the Arrival Plaza through the scaling character of the outdoor spaces, and we're providing, within the interior of the campus, a lot of usable, usable and active landscape spaces throughout. So it's, it's really going to be a vibrant place to be during the day and throughout time. The realities of doing a campus like this, as was mentioned, require phasing over many years. And one of the things that we're also trying to take into consideration are some existing leases that exist on the site. So the Phase, Phase One development goes planned north-south. As you can tell, with, with Building One being at the corner of Industrial and Commercial, and Building Two being sort of mid-block there with the temporary parking lot all the way to the south along Old County. Along with the Phase One development, we do get most of the commercial landscape, double alley of trees, so you're really going to get a great landscape redefinition of the entire edge along Commercial Street, as well as the majority of the commercial Arrival Plaza mid-block there. So you'll really have, even though this is an interim phase, a really great experience along Commercial Street and a really welcoming arrival to the campus and to the site. As we think about Phase One, we're also looking at pedestrian connectivity back then to, you know, the Phase One campus across the street, so that these two buildings are going to really rely on some of the amenitization that occurs on the existing campus. So there'll be a really important linkage between those two. Then we'll develop, you know, to the east and, and build and complete really the, the development along Industrial with, with a new life science building, as well as the parking garage and the amenity spaces in the middle of the campus. And that'll include the, the development of Polgus Creek, the renovation there of the creek, from the top of the site to the bottom of the site. And then we will finalize that, the last phase there with the full development of the last two life science buildings and the second garage onsite. And that'll complete all the Old County improvements as well along that thoroughfare. I'm going to walk you through really quickly here the designs of Building One and Building Two, the primary, the two buildings that occur in Phase One here. And you can see through on Building One and Building Two, we tried to take really great care in activating Commercial Street, so we, what you can see, it's sort of salmon-colored down the middle, are two through lobbies, so that really the lobby occurs both on the Paseo, the sort of internal heart of the campus, as well as along Commercial Street, and is coordinated with, with arrival points along Commercial in coordination with the Tree Alley that happens north-south. So one of the things that we took great inspiration from is, was really the tidal flow that occurs adjacent to the site, obviously influences the, you know, there's a tidal aspect to the entire site that is present, and that has gone, a great deal of thinking has gone into how to help mitigate that onsite. So we really wanted to think about that, those natural processes and the forms that are associated with, with tidal flows. So you could begin to, to start to see some of that thinking in the architecture itself. You know, we, we really tried to make the building something that's both holds an important corner at Industrial and Commercial, but is also soft and welcoming, where the building scale really begins to step back. You can see that there's an upper terrace on the upper floor. The ground floor here is primarily transparent, it's warm, and then the building really steps itself back. You can see that the facade peels back and begins to express double, double-height lobby entrances on, on Commercial Street, so that you can really have a sense of arrival. We've taken a little artistic liberty here by removing the alley of trees just to show the building, so you can see what's happening there, otherwise, you know, there, so keep in mind that there are, the alley does continue all the way to the corner. And what we've tried to do is, is think about how do we create an interesting architecture that's dynamic around the site? So we've recessed the windows. By doing so, we're able to provide solar shading for the building and reduce energy use, but through that, we're also able to add a second tone of warmer metal panels on the inside of one direction of, of the recess. And that allows a real dynamism, I think, to the architecture, where from one viewpoint, you see the warmth, and it draws the eye, and as you move around the building, the building is constantly changing relative to where you are. And so it doesn't feel static, it has a real sense of interest and warmth, which, which we think is really important. We've also begun to set elements of the facade back to provide outdoor terraces, which you can begin to really see here. This is a view looking the other direction down Industrial, where we've set the facade back in, in a number of locations to begin to allow for outdoor terraces where employees can come out and work. It breaks up the facade and, and really adds some interest along the Paseo here, and you can see again that second-story recess for the architecture. You can see it a little bit closer here. You can see how we're really using soffits, you know, effectively here to, to create another level of architecture and interest and warmth to the design for the project. And traditionally, on, on the ground floor here, what you're seeing on the right is a cafe space that will begin to pull out and really activate the Paseo, and so we've got a number of amenities and elements that'll begin to spill into the landscape, and we've really worked closely with our landscape design team to integrate the experience going indoor and outdoor on the campus. And then quickly here, Building Two, you know, we, we again took inspiration from some of the history on the site in terms of glass development, and, and we sort of came to an idea of prism and water, and, and a notion of reflection and lightness, and really tried to demonstrate that in the architecture. And what we were trying to do is, is create a campus that had individual characters for buildings, but where they were all tied into one cohesive sense of, of place and campus, you knew you were part of a collective, but each building had its individuality. So in this case, the, the building architecture is much lighter, it's more reflective, and, you know, it's, again, it's, we're using the profile of the metal panels, which you'll see a little bit better in a, in a subsequent image, to really provide shading and interest. But here again, we're using elements such as warm materials at the ground floor and in our second-story and fourth-story terraces to really create a sense of warmth. Those same, you know, materials connect then back to the, the first building that you saw, so there is a little compatibility there, but it's a way to, to create some architectural expression setbacks in the facade. Here you can see that again occurs. This is the, the southernmost, this is the sort of Arrival Courtyard area, and you can see at the, the Tree Alley and the, and the sort of lobby along Commercial Street, again, using framing elements to, to create balconies and a sense of arrival at the, at the building lobby here. So really breaking down the scale of the architecture and making it more accessible onsite. And here you can get the best sense of what, what's actually happening on the facade. It's a little tricky in renderings to see the detail, but we have butterflied metal panels that, that are proud of, that come out from the facade of the glass and provide, you know, the, the hope here is that, that as light moves around the building, you're, you're catching light in different angles, and you're not seeing one monotonous color of silver, you're seeing a lot of reflectivity along the building. And then the leading edge is, is a warm tone of one side of, of that butterflied panel. So you can again begin to, as you're moving through the building, begin to see the sort of glimmer and warmth in those panels as well. So there's a little bit of playfulness and, and we think sparkle to the building as you're moving around, and those panels begin to lighten as you go vertically through the building as well. So they're, they're a little bit smaller and thinner at the top, and they stagger in rhythm as you go up. So again, it's, you know, something that's a little bit more dynamic. And I'll leave you with this image, which is, which is really the sort of integration of both Building One and Building Two within the Paseo space here. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Before you go to the public comments, we do have two modifications to the condition of approval certificate. Those are behind you, so one condition's removed, one condition's modified, and then we have added the findings related to the protected tree removal is the second document. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate the details and thoughtfulness of the presentation and the design. We'd like to start off tonight with public comment, and then we'll go to Commissioner questions and comments. And again, we're going to start with the topic of transportation first, and then we will go to the other areas or topics that people might want to talk about. And so if a member of the public does want to make a public comment, because the first public comment is just on transportation, you're able to also make a public comment when the second, you know, segment comes up on other matters. So tonight, it's kind of special. People can speak twice on this item if they so desire. So if you'd like to make a public comment on Alexandria, first on transportation, please fill out a request to speak form located at the back of the chambers and submit to city staff, or you can raise your hand to speak when I call you. People on Zoom, please join the Zoom meeting. The screen is showing the Zoom address, but it's meeting 886-354-67439. The phone number to call is 1-669-900-9128, and then you enter that meeting ID, 886-354-67439. You can virtually raise your hand by clicking on, I think it's reactions, and then raise hand at the bottom of the screen. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand virtually, and then when you're called on, you can press star six. So we have one speaker slip, and I don't know if the speaker would like to comment on transportation. If not, that is fine, but I do have a speaker slip in person from Tony Urbina. Would you like to make a comment at this session or the next public comment period? The next one, that sounds good. Okay, are there any other folks who would like to make a public comment on transportation items here in chambers? Okay, seeing none. We'll go to the folks online, Lynette on Zoom. Does anybody have their hands raised to make a public comment?
Yes, we have one hand raised, Matt Schneider.
Great, Matt, welcome.
Max.
I'm sorry, Max, thank you. Max, welcome. You have two minutes and four to make a comment right now on Alexandria for transportation-related issues. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Speaking on behalf of the GESC board, first of all, I appreciate all the changes that were made in regards to the parking garages and, and moving some of the traffic off of Industrial and Old County onto Commercial. Just wanted to say that we'd appreciate pushing traffic even further from Old County, which is one lane in each direction, towards Industrial, which is two lanes in each direction is obviously closer to 101, et cetera, as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Max. Appreciate your comments. Lynette, is there anyone else who has their hand raised and would like to make a public comment on Zoom?
There are none.
Okay. If anyone would like- Okay. If anyone would like to make a public comment on transportation, now is the time on Zoom. So I'll give folks just another 30 seconds to change their minds. We will have another chance to make public comments on any other of the project attributes after this. Lynette, has anyone raised their hand?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to not close the public comment period because we're going to keep it going. So but at this point, I'll turn to the commissioners to see if anyone has first questions about any of the transportation aspects and then any comments on transportation. I'd like to start to my right. Everyone's left. Commissioner Anand.
Thank you, Chair. My question will be during the construction phase, I understand that there will be some local streets that will be blocked and because the big trucks are coming in and all of that. I appreciate the access, the clover access for that. But once the construction begins, what kind of disruption can the neighboring businesses or residences expect? And how will that be communicated to them?
Yes, please come on up and speak in the microphone so people can hear you.
So usually, we'll do a neighborhood notice before construction starts. And then any information that the public would like to know, they can reach out to us. And we typically coordinate with the general contractor and do the traffic mitigation plan, kind of similar to what, or traffic control plan, similar to what you've seen before. And I think there'll be advance notice posted if there is street closure. And we would have to get permit from the city anyway for those types of disruption.
Thank you. My only encouragement will be to inform the neighbors as soon as possible and as clearly as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for now on transportation? Okay. We'll go to my left. Commissioner Castaneda.
I do have a question on the TDM. Is that here?
Yes.
Because this is happening in three different phases, can you explain how this affects the TDM? How much of the TDM implementation, which looks to be a very robust plan that seems very, very good, how much of that will take place at the end of Phase 1 and be in operation?
Great. Lisa Costa-Sanders, talking about the TDM.
We can have Mark Spencer, our transportation consultant, respond to that. Mark, are you able to speak?
I am. And hopefully you all can hear me.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Please, go ahead.
With respect to the TDM, so the analysis assumes and the requirements have to be that for each phase, you have to have TDM that meets requirements, 20% reduction in trips, enough reduction in vehicle miles traveled so that the impact is reduced to a less than significant level for VMT. That's what the impact, transportation impact would need under CEQA. So in each phase, TDM has to be implemented. With a project of this size, the TDM would be increased in terms of what it has to do with each successive phase, meaning that the more you're accommodating, the more employees onsite, the more trips that need to be reduced, which might mean more shuttles, more transit passes, whatever the measures are. And the TDM plan, which has been reviewed, is, as you said, quite robust. It will be imperative, though, and any TDM plan does get monitored for its efficacy, such that you're showing this is the number of trips being reduced. It's easy enough to monitor. You can count driveways and ins and outs of the site and how many trips are actually accessing the site, how many people are using shuttles and so on. So you can assess its trip reduction. And then through formulas, you can actually assess vehicle miles traveled reduction. So each phase has its own requirements that have to be measured and adhered to as it moves forward. So it's not waiting until, say, Phase 3 for TDM to kick in. It has to kick in when the project starts in Phase 1, occupancy starts.
Thank you. That's very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Bundy.
Thank you very much, Chair Clements. Thank you all for your presentation. My question is with regard to the TMA plan, the way that the agreement reads that it needs to be submitted within a year of final approvals. And so I was wondering what final approvals means in that context. Is that final approval of this phase or some subsequent phase? It's in the TMA, in the agreement number 2.6.
Is that something that Mark Spencer can speak on or the applicant directly? Welcome.
I'm neither one of those.
Sure.
Anna Shimko, your outside counsel on this. So the development agreement provides that the actions have to be taken within one year from final approval of the project approvals. And the project approvals are those things that you're approving tonight and that the city council would approve when it all goes to the city council. So as soon as those are non-appellable, hopefully no one would be challenging the project. It looks like there's good support here. Then, within a year following that, the actions have to be taken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Bundy, any other transportation questions? No. I had a couple of questions on the transportation, actually kind of building on what we just said. The Transportation Management Association. So would it be fully started then within one year after the appeal period ends, after council approval? Or is there any, and so that really would be taking place in the Phase 1 development. Are there activities that one would do in Phase 1 different than what you would do in Phases 2 and 3? Or is it really just kind of getting it up and going and then working with the other property owners in the area and establishing the program upfront? That could just expand over time. What does that TMA look like over time for those activities? Welcome.
Hi. Teresa Nemeth with Alexandria Real Estate Equities. I have the distinct experience of having worked for 26 years on the Mission Bay TMA and its formation. So I have a little bit of experience. Essentially, in the first year, as we were saying, you would create the formation documents. You would establish a board of directors that would then manage the operations of the TMA, assess collections of dues, because you'd have to have dues collected in order to run shuttles. And those shuttle runs would increase as more usage comes into the campus.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Actually, you may want to stay up. I'm not sure who the right person to ask is. But we did see the struck phrase in the findings regarding an employer-sponsored shuttle. So is that as distinct from a local TMA-sponsored shuttle? Yes, she's nodding her head. Yes. Okay, thank you for that. I had a question on micromobility. I did see that mentioned in one of the slides. And we see that there's a ton of excess bike parking. I wondered also about e-scooter parking or other forms of micromobility. Is that kind of within the bike parking space? Or is it hosted somewhere else on the site? How do those get accommodated?
So on our other campuses, they are distributed, not always with the bike parking. It depends on the provider and what they require. So I think that is to be determined in the future, depending on whether we're providing an actual, like, sit-down scooter, stand-up scooter, who their provider is. But there will be accommodations for parking those and management of them onsite.
Thank you. Okay, those were the only questions that I had on transportation. Let's go over to Commissioner comments. I'll go back in the same order. Do you have any comments you'd like to make on the transportation, on the plan, or the logistics, or the, you know, the site layout with regards to transportation?
Thank you for continuing to update the plan. As we have gone through it over the past few years, I clearly see that a lot of thought went into it. And I appreciate the spirit of taking care of the community and not trying to inconvenience people at the cost of construction and economic development. I think that's a great example for future businesses as well. So yeah, as long as we are keeping the communication transparent and timely, I think we can create a lot of positive impact together. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Castaneda.
Yes. I mentioned before that I thought it was a very robust plan. And I see that the reduction is predicted to be maybe 23% reduction with an eventual 40, which is very ambitious. Is that 40% prediction based upon having shuttles?
Yeah, that's been our experience over time. It doesn't happen instantly. It grows.
Transportation consultant opinion on that as well. Mark?
Yes. Thank you for that. The 23% reduction in trips is what we predict based on the TDM plan that we reviewed. It has a lot of very positive elements in there, which collectively build and support one another, complement one another, which we would predict has about 23% reduction in trips, exceeding the requirement of the 20%. So that's a very positive thing. The 40% is an estimation that we looked at as an academic exercise. In other words, if a TMA were to be formed and Alexandria were to run this and implement it, it's kind of like, how do you put your TDM plan on steroids? How can you do more? Because suddenly you're perhaps combining other forces, you know, maybe bringing in other entities in the surrounding neighborhood. And you're really ramping up your TDM so it can do so much more. The 40% sounds very ambitious. It's not necessarily ambitious when you look at other TMAs that have been formed in the Bay Area and what their success is. Each one's different because each has a different site, different characteristics, or different population. But this is not something new. Alexandria has experience with this, as you just heard, in Mission Bay. Others have experience with this. And so we did a review of other TMAs, what their efficacy is, how well they're performing. And there's a range in there. So we don't think 40% is actually out of line if everything comes together the way that it can in the formation of a TMA, particularly when you have an entity that has done this and knows what they're doing. So that's the difference between the 23 and the 40%. But to be clear, under CEQA and under the, what we need is a 20% reduction and to satisfy the cities and the counties requirement, for that matter. And this would exceed that and then perhaps do even more when you have a TMA, which would mean more trip reduction, less emphasis on parking and single population vehicles.
Thank you. I like this plan.
Great. Commissioner Bundy, any comments about the transportation plan or other elements?
Yeah, thank you very much for your hard work and working with staff to reconfigure the roadways and the impacts on traffic and the accessibility and activation for the neighborhood. The EIR definitely demonstrated that with mitigation, that the significant traffic impacts would be mitigated to less than significant levels. I really appreciate the dirt hauling routes, that those do not go through the neighborhood. So thank you so much for listening to the residents on that topic. And I do appreciate the proximity of this project to transit, really taking advantage of that amenity that we have here in our region and all the multimodal options that this project enhances. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to echo that comment, which is this is a great location for such a large campus and job-intensive use, close to transit, very walkable. And, you know, elements that we'll talk about in a minute. But the Tree L.A., I looked up the definition. That's a new phrase on me. But really trying to make the area quite walkable and encourage mode shift and the micromobility. I think it's important. Also, I really commend you on the foreign excess number of bike parking spaces than what you needed to provide. And I'm excited about the TDM. I mean, again, it's very robust. And the creation of the TMA, I think we've talked about it for different deals. And this is the deal that will get it going. So that's pretty exciting to me. So I think really robust and positive transportation elements. So thank you. And I did want to say also thoughtful, thoughtful, you know, what's the right word, turn-ins for drop-offs on all three of the streets involved with the site. So appreciate you trying to get ahead of any, you know, any challenging conditions that would occur if you had not planned so well for what is real, that folks will get dropped off and then maybe someone will go and take the train themselves to work somewhere else. So thank you for all of those things. Great. Any last comments on transportation while we have the mark on the phone? No. Thank you, Mark, for being available. We appreciate it. Okay. So we will go back to a general public comment period on Alexandria for any other topic other than transportation. If you weren't present and wanted to make a transportation comment as well, that is fine for the public. But again, if you're present physically, please fill out a speaker form in the rear of the council chambers and submit to staff. Or you can raise your hand. And if you're on Zoom, the address is on the screen right now. So it is meeting 886-354-67439. You can go online and type that into Zoom, or you can call 1-669-900-9128 and enter that meeting number. And then you can raise your hand by clicking reactions at the bottom of the screen and then raise hand. If you're joined by phone, you can press star nine and then star six to unmute. Is anyone else present? Let's go back to Tony. Is it Urbina or Urbina? Please. Urbina, welcome. Tony would like to comment on Alexandria. Thank you for joining. You have two minutes.
Oh, thank you. By the way, beautiful. That was a great presentation. The buildings are beautiful. Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Tony Urbina. I'm a business representative with the Sheet Metal Workers Union. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of several hundred San Carlos residents who are proud members of the union I'm with, along with other affiliated unions of the Building Trades Council. When this item was first agendized last month, I stood here with many residents at that time. I spoke about financial challenges that our trade families are having right now during this, you know, the construction activity being so limited at the time. I'm here again tonight to urge you to support the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences project. This development has, the developer, Alexandria, has a long history of working with our signatory contractors. These are employers who hire locally, and they pay family-supporting wages. This partnership, this partnership means this project would directly benefit the San Carlos workforce and also means our union apprentices, many of whom who are from this area, will be trained on the job site. And when those responsible developers like Alexandria commit to using our apprentices, it allows us to expand opportunities in our training centers. It also gives San Carlos youth a pathway into solid lifelong careers in the trades. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Would anyone else like to make a public comment who is in person? Okay. Lynette, do we have any hands raised on Zoom to make a public comment?
Yes, we do. Max.
Max, welcome back, Max. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. So two comments questions. First of all, speaking on behalf of the GESC board again, our number one concern with the project overall is hazardous waste. I was just wondering if the plan is still to cap the site versus digging out the soil and transporting it somewhere else. Our concern there is just the previous companies, Kelly Moore, I think Raytheon and others, and the probability of hazardous materials and also the proximity to Pulgas Creek and outlet to the bay. So first question- and also the proximity to Pulgas Creek and outlet to the bay. So first question, and then the second question. I think I saw that the amenity space is available to the city and nonprofits. So the GESE Board, for instance, I don't believe that we're technically a nonprofit. And I was just wondering if we'd be able to use that amenity space for community meetings? The reason I ask that question is we've actually tried to reserve space in the original Alexandria building, and we're unable to do so. We started initial conversations, but weren't able to confirm it. So we had to hold our meetings elsewhere.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Max. Thank you for your comments and questions. Appreciate it. Okay. Lynette, are there any other hands raised on Zoom?
There are none.
There are none. Okay. I think the applicant has done a good job of public meetings over time, because there are no other speakers on Zoom. Would anyone, I'm pausing for a minute in case anyone else who is attending would like to raise their hand on Zoom. Lynette, do we see any hands?
There are none.
Okay. Thank you. With that, now I'll ask for a motion to close the public comment period.
I move that we close public comment.
Thank you. Anna, second?
I second.
Thank you. Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gravie is excused, and Chair Clements. Yes, thank you. Lisa was going to approach and advise, and I did want to ask if you had a desired sequence for organizing the comments for the rest of the actions.
Sure. I thought first maybe we could respond to the public comment that was made, and then however you would like to organize your thoughts for the others. So for, I'll start with the second comment. For the use of the community space, the wording is, "Developers shall make such project event space available for rental by nonprofits or other not-for-profit community organizations with principal offices within the city limits or that serve purposes within the city limits." So based on advice from our legal counsel, we feel the GESE Board would qualify as such an organization. So yes. And then for the first question regarding the cleanup, I would like to have the applicant's hazardous waste, environmental consultant speak. So Lynette, can you please promote Nick Walchuk? Right, Nick? Yeah. And now, Nick, are you available to unmute and respond to that question?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Welcome, Nick. Thank you. Did you hear the question?
I did. I did. And thanks for the opportunity to speak. To make it really short, capping is not the planned remedy for this site. There will be a variety of ways that we address the impacts that are known to be across the entirety of the project site. Most of those impacts are on groundwater, and groundwater remediation has actually already been conducted, and we're in a post-medial monitoring phase at this point for the Kelly Moore portion of the site, to the extent that soil is excavated as part of construction. That soil will be characterized and off-haul if it needs to leave the site. Anyone who's familiar with the 825, 835 industrial project across the street that was mentioned earlier, there was a significant amount of soil that was excavated and moved off-site as a result of that. So that would be part of kind of an overall remedial effort that really is facilitated by the redevelopment.
Great. Thank you, Nick. That was a good idea. Thank you for having those questions answered. I appreciate that. Okay. So here's what I'd like to suggest about comments. There are lots of different elements to this. So I'd like to break it up into groups, if I could, for Commissioner comments and any other questions, but comments, really. The first group being certification of the EIR and the mitigation monitoring, the PD zoning, the PD permit, the design review for the first two phases, and I'd like to move the sign program down. I'd like to do the community development agreement. So everything regarding the EIR, the PD zoning, the PD permit, everything about the site layout and design, and then the community development agreement in this first round of comments. Does that sound doable? Okay. I'd like to start maybe down, for variety's sake, down with Commissioner Bundy with any, I guess, you know, I guess we could do comments. People have a lot of questions remaining. Do commissioners want to split up the questions from the comments again? Or you want to kind of do it all together?
Probably around the comments first. Yeah, questions first, yeah?
Okay, let's do that. Questions first. EIR, zoning, permit, design, layout, all of that, and the community development agreement, the development agreement.
All right. So I'll start in on the flood resilience questions. You probably guessed that. The project includes several flood risk reduction design elements. You've got a greater setback from the creek than required. You're widening the creek, raising the bank elevations, the onsite detention, and raising the finished floor elevation. My first question is, will the, since the creek improvements are going to be part of Phase Two, will Phase One independently meet the stormwater retent, or flood risk reduction and stormwater quality requirements?
It absolutely has to. So that's required by law of C3, C6. We have a civil engineer on the line if you want more detailed answer.
That'll do it. My next question is regarding the parking garage, which is adjacent to the creek and could be subject to rising groundwater from sea level rise. How does the parking garage's design consider this threat to provide flood resilience for that part of the design?
Looking that up. They've prepared a really detailed flood model. That was really pretty cool. And we had a video of it. So it showed with all the buildings, because they are raising the site. So we wanted to make sure there wasn't any off-flooding that happened while they raised that site. So they did a very detailed flood model that showed, you know, how it would move and where it would go. And our city engineer was able to verify that there would not be any off-flooding with all those improvements. And so we're going to verify that at each phase as well. But if you have a more detailed response you'd like to give, yeah, the civil engineer? Jeff can certainly respond. Tarantino? Lynette, can you unmute? Jeff Tarantino?
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Please go ahead.
Great. Yes. So the groundwater rise risk as part of our collaboration with the structural engineering team designed the parking structure, they're integrating various waterproofing standards, and so we'll be continuing to evaluate that throughout the detailed design phase.
Thank you. And that's probably good enough for the flood resilience questions.
Anything else about the design, the layout, the PD permit, anything else on the EIR?
Regarding the permitting required from the various resource agencies for the work within the creek, what is the timing of those permits relative to the phases? Because much of that creek work, I think, is in Phase Two.
The development agreement establishes that during Phase One, they need to start applying for the permits, and then that way they can commence construction in Phase Two.
Thank you very much.
Great. Anything else?
That's all for now. Thanks.
Okay, for questions. Thank you. Commissioner Castaneda?
There are two oversight cases that are still active with regard to the site, and there's a number of parties involved and responsibilities. And there's talk about ongoing monitoring, but during the actual construction itself, what kind of monitoring will be done? And will there be soil testing again when the soil is removed and testing of the water throughout these procedures? And how is all this going to be coordinated?
Nick, please feel free to respond.
Sure. So yes, first, the soil question is the easiest. Anytime soil is leaving a site, not just this one, not one that has a known contamination history, but even a clean site. For the accepting party to receive soil, it's got to be properly characterized so that they can accept it. And so that would be the case here. There would be soil characterization that takes place, probably in a phased fashion, to establish what we know about the soil, what areas are contaminated, what aren't. There are, you know, probably some clean areas here as well, so that it can be properly characterized prior to off-haul. As far as the groundwater goes, there's a robust groundwater monitoring network through, with a number of wells throughout the property, one on the former L3 side, I guess you call it the northern side, as well as the southern side with Kelly Moore. There's routine groundwater monitoring that's going on under the oversight of the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board. That will continue. There may be some deviation and changes over time as the project progresses, where wells that would be otherwise damaged or in the way of construction, grading, so forth, would be removed. And then we would work with the water board to reinstall the wells, to maintain a monitoring network, to ensure that we have a good picture of groundwater quality over time.
Okay, thank you. And just one more question. What about monitoring of air quality during construction?
That is a slightly different topic, but that is something I believe that was covered by my firm, actually, in the EIR. I'm a geologist, so I usually stick to underground, but I'll say that I know for the air quality, we looked at that. We have some site-specific modeling relative to the construction effort, and the monitoring that will be necessary during that work to assess the project's specific impacts under the Bay Area district.
Yes, do you have additional comments on that?
Yeah, so Rebecca Ald, the CEQA consultant, will answer Gregory. So from the emissions standpoint, there's not really any additional monitoring that happens. It is all monitoring that's part of the earth moving. But there are constraints that are put in place. So there's various mitigation measures. There's recommendations from the Air District that we've outlined as mitigation measures that will all be followed to make sure that there's not particulates in the air or other high-level emissions.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a much better answer.
Concise. Commissioner Anand, any questions on these topics?
Yes, I have two. So my first one is related to community development, much in line with one of our speakers here. Are there any formal partnerships in place to support job training or local hiring from marginalized communities in the area for this project?
Typically, our projects are built in partnership with large general contracting firms, and we work with our contractors to approach the community and find such emerging potential workers, you might say, or trainees.
Great.
Partnership. That was the word I was looking for, partnership programs. The unions, and working with the unions, yes.
Great, yeah. I see enormous economic opportunity here for our local community. So, and the second question is related to design. I'm very pleased to see the beautiful designs of two different buildings, very contemporary, modern. But with the, so the first, the second, the Prism Building, which plays on the light shadows. Now, considering that these buildings are going to be super tall, has it been taken into consideration, you know, some sort of light reflection or overheating of neighboring buildings because of the way the panels are reflecting the sunlight or the heat?
Rebecca Ald, again, I'm going to jump in, and then the applicants can follow up if they would like. So there is a bird-safe design analysis that was done that looked at the light and glare of the building, specifically with birds in mind, but that's more a constraint than other reflective. So that was a reference document in the draft and the final EIR.
And my second question would be, are there any, because, again, because of the tall buildings, and I see there are going to be six buildings in future standing quite close to each other. And my experience is from going around San Francisco downtown where there are tall buildings, and which creates like really cold microclimates or wind tunnels in there, and you're creating such beautiful public spaces. It'll be a shame if we end up creating some wind tunnels where public can't even enjoy these spaces. So has a study been done to that effect?
It hasn't been done, but our standard at Alexandria on every project, especially faces and things that continue to develop and change, we do deploy a wind study, and there are different types of wind study. I think what we're talking about here is pedestrian comfort, right? So that you don't create a wind tunnel. It's a pleasant environment for people to walk through, to sit, to enjoy. So that has been done on every ground-up development project in the Bay Area in the past few years, and it will definitely be done on this project. We want to make sure that the beautiful buildings that we design, the beautiful outdoor spaces that we design actually get used. So yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I had one question about the use of the, I guess, west side of the site for the temporary parking lot in Phase One. And what happens if Phase Two and/or Three are significantly delayed? Is there something that addresses, you know, that use not staying permanent over time in case the buildings are delayed?
Add-on, Anna. We did discuss that scenario, and so it is evaluated in the development agreement. So in Phase Two, as we explained, a parking structure would be constructed that then they could eliminate that surface parking area. So if the scenario is they build Phase One only, we're not able to build future phases, before the end of the development agreement term, which is that 15-year term, they would need to come to us with a plan on how they would replace that parking with a structure and remove the surface parking lot. So it's specified as being a temporary use in the planned development zoning as well, and in the development agreement.
So technically, Phase One and its, whatever it's built, could remain in place for 15 years. There's no other timing requirement for Phase Two to start necessarily?
There's no timing requirement for Phase Two, yes.
All right. Thank you. I think that was the only question that I had. So let's go back to Commissioner comments, and on all of these things, the EIR, the zoning, the PD plan, the development agreement, anything about the site layout, just general comments. Commissioner Bundy, why don't you start?
Thank you once again for all your hard work on this. I thought the EIR was very well thought out and definitely demonstrated that the potentially significant impacts would be mitigated to less than significant. Definitely appreciate the flood resilience measures. I actually think it's very inspiring and exciting to see the creek being made accessible and really thinking about how you all can protect your investment by elevating the site against sea level rise. The design is quite thoughtful. I really liked hearing the kind of design philosophy behind it and how it's pulling in the bay and using these different features of light and color and the two-story entries and whatnot. So I think it's going to be a really beautiful part of the east side. And I really appreciate the substantial community benefits and the work that you all have done to work closely with us on the development agreement, which is quite a read. I did read it. So it's really thought through what the different outcomes are and how we can ensure that there is some certainty for the development to move forward. So I'm supportive of these elements of tonight's action. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Castaneda?
Thank you for this very nice presentation of these very beautiful buildings. I do think that the proposed phasing that you have come up with is logical, is the logical way to develop the site. I think that's been done very well. The Phase One, because the Phase One commercial street improvements are going to provide the protected bike paths, tree-lined sidewalks, and this is going to increase the connect- the protected bike paths, tree-lined sidewalks, and this is going to increase the connectivity from east to west in our community. Phase 2 then, of course, will improve the length of Pulvis Creek and the bridge to Britton and also increase connectivity. I think these phases are consistent with the general and east side plans, and they result in many amenities to the community. And much is going to be gained long before Phase 3 if it never even happens. So I do think that this project is consistent with the general plan, allowing research and development and commercial development, and consistent with the east side plan. It provides plazas, and I support the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anand?
Thank you for the thorough report and answering all our questions as well, as well as the community's questions. I feel, I've lived in San Carlos for many, many years now, but when I go out in the Bay Area, people still say, "San Carlos, where is it?" So I'm looking forward to this project because projects like these that consider, take into account, you know, economic opportunity, environmental impact, community development, actually put cities up on the map. And I'm positive that by Phase 2, like Commissioner Castaneda said, people will not ask, "Where is San Carlos?" Also, those are the seen aspects. I would just, I also hope to see the unseen aspects, which are keeping equity in mind, creating opportunities for marginalized communities in the city, and also being cognizant of the neighborhood while the project is going on. So, but other than that, I'm very supportive of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a few comments about the site plan and the design. I absolutely love the design, I have to say. For the first two buildings, I love how they speak to each other, and they're consistent, but they are not the same at all. I love the undulation and the references to the tidal pools in the bay. I think it's very thoughtful. And the way that the colors change and the shapes change as you go around the building is just beautiful. I appreciate also on the development agreement or Development Agreement Plus, that, you know, access to this beautiful place that's being created will be benefiting the community. The fact that the community or the development agreement payment is quite large, is a huge asset and really speaks to Alexandria's long-term, you know, build-and-hold outlook on life, probably. You're a member of our community, and I appreciate all of your contributions to the community. The campus, I enjoy the fact that you made the kind of entryway plaza on, what street is that commercial? And that the campus is porous, that the community has access to the entire campus. I like the paseo through the center, that it's not, you know, that it kind of moves and through the center and then, you know, angles off. And really like the access to the creek that's being built, the pathways along the creek, you know, again, undulating along the creek. I think it's going to be a beautiful place for people to recreate. And again, the double-lined tree streets really can encourage people to walk in that area or bike, but, you know, kind of protected from the elements a bit. I did, back to the development agreement, we appreciate that the payment is actually earlier than required, paying at building permits being pulled rather than certificate of occupancy. So appreciate that acceleration as well. And, you know, I think it's a lovely place, and I'm looking forward to the impact. Also, you know, to have another cafe that is publicly accessible in that area and the active ground floor uses that do face the street, Alexandria's willingness to, you know, move, both based on the city's comments, but my understanding also on the GESC, community's comments, as to, you know, don't have like large blank walls face our major streets and really work on that design. I think it'll, I think it'll really add to the vibrancy of that area and the beauty of that area. So, okay, so I think we've covered the development agreement and the entitlement side. So we'd like to end the design review. So, okay, group two of comments, questions and then comments, ready? It is the vesting tentative parcel map. It's the grading dirt haul. It's the master sign program. It is the protected tree removal. And I think we already addressed the TDM, but if there's anything else you'd like to say about the TDM, we could do that in that group. Did we cover all the topics, if that's the case? I tried. Okay. So on those topics, who would like to start? Commissioner Castaneda, would you like to start? Any questions on any of those topics?
I do have a question on the tree removal. Are all of the trees going to be removed in Phase 1? I was thinking that if there are trees, I'm not sure there are trees on the other portions that will be done in 2 and 3, but it seemed like phasing the tree removal would be a good idea if possible.
So timing of the tree removal and planting?
I'm trusted to answer this question after voting. We are, we are planning to remove the trees by phase. So unless we absolutely have to remove trees from the next phase because it's in the way of some other construction means and methods that would impede them on safety, we would only remove the trees that are within the facework area.
Thank you. That's, because I think that's a really good idea. Okay. Okay.
Okay, good. Any questions? Commissioner Anand, do you have any questions on any of those topics?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Bundy, any questions on any of those topics?
Not at this time, thanks.
I don't think I had questions. I have a random question. I think maybe I should have done this in transportation. I noticed that the presentation said there are over 1,000 EV-capable parking stalls and wondered, are there plans to create those hookups? And for how many spaces? Are there any more specifics on that, on the actual hookups?
I'm Chrissy, I'm with Alexandria, going to answer that question. So the amount of EV-capable stalls were actually adhering to a non-mandatory measure, Cal Green Tier 2, which actually has more EV-capable and EV Day 1, Day 1 meaning the chargers actually installed there, than the City of San Carlos Municipal Code. I can't recall the exact number of stalls that has the actual EV charger installed, those Day 1 ones, but they are, they are on the drawings, and they should exceed what City of San Carlos has in their code.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. For anyone at home who couldn't hear that, there's a, she said a percentage based on the total count for that phase of the parking that's provided. Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris. I think that is the major question that I had, just looking at all of the topics. Yeah, good. Okay. Would Commissioner like to start on comments for any of those topics? Again, the tentative, the vesting tentative parcel map, grading and dirt haul, master sign program, protected tree removal, and TDM in case you had more comments. Anyone like to start? How about Commissioner Bundy?
Any of the questions I had, I actually found answers to when I read the report. So I really appreciate all the hard work you went into this. My main question on the tentative parcel map was fire truck access, and that has been addressed in the report. The grading and dirt hauling, we've already commented on the routing that will avoid the neighborhoods, and we heard a question on tree removal. So I have no questions on this, and I'm supportive of these elements as well.
Yeah. Any other comments? Just general support?
Generally supportive.
General supportive, thank you. Commissioner Castaneda?
I don't have any more comments, but I'm in general support.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Anand?
I agree with Commissioner Bundy on the section where there are mitigation measures. So the if-this, then-that section, the Exhibit C, is incredibly helpful in understanding a lot of aspects of the project. So thank you for including that. Also, I want to thank the Alexandria group, the city staff, the other community bodies, GESC, and other community members that have provided such rich input through the lifespan of this project. So I'm in support.
Thank you. My comment on the tree plan, tree removal plan, and then replanting, I'm just really glad to see the huge increase over the required number of trees that this property will bring, the landscaping being native and really contextual for our area. It's just, it looks lovely. So I'm looking forward to seeing that and especially, you know, enhancing people's experience as they get through, the public as well as the workers, but, you know, going through the property and then walking along the creek as that gets finished. Oh, I wanted to also just comment the, you know, the dirt haul route, really taking advantage of proximity to the highway and really minimizing impact on local, single-family neighborhoods is very fortunate and very desirable, so we appreciate that as well. So general comments, I'm really excited to see this project come to fruition. I understand that the phasing will occur, and so we look to see it iterating over the years. I think the fact that your other space is 100% leased and active and that you have done this kind of property in different places in the bay and are learning from those experiences, that the TMA is part of this is really exciting. And just, you know, I think the project is going to bring a lot of benefits to the city, an unusually impactful and positive project for the city, as it seems. So we look forward to seeing it come to fruition with a lovely design. And, yeah, and I look forward to that. I just wanted to also say that I think the question that Commissioner Anand brought up about, you know, what does the development of an impactful project like this do for workers in the community, you know, who do not, who will not benefit probably from working at that location and, you know, may live in our community or may be traveling to our community for work already. So I was pleased to hear that you do have some kind of outreach to, it sounds like, local subs or and/or use of some folks that have apprentice or type of learning or training programs, and that may or may not include labor, official labor unions, but it sounds like it may. So I think that's a good place for us to be, and I appreciate that as well. And so with that, I think we can go to a motion. I read a very long, very, very long slide earlier. Would anyone like to make the formal motion? And can we vote on the entire thing all at once, or would we like to split it up?
We have it set up for different motions because they're different actions. Two are actually, one is a recommendation, the other is an action you're taking tonight.
Yes, exactly. Okay, would someone like to make the first motion in the first paragraph?
I move that the Planning and Transportation Commission make the findings outlined in the staff report and adopt the resolution recommending the city council certify the environmental impact report and adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan.
I'd like to second that, actually. Andrea, can you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey is excused, Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Would anyone like to make the second motion on the screen?
I further move that the Planning and Transportation Commission make the findings outlined in the staff report and adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt the ordinance approving the planned development plan and adopting the zoning map, designating the site, planned development, PD, and approve the development agreement.
Great. Do we have a second for that?
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey is excused, and Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. And Commissioner Bundy, would you like to make the third motion?
I drew the short straw.
I taught more than enough, so I think we'd like to spread it around.
I move that the Planning Commission approve the design review certificate, tentative parcel map, transportation demand management plan, and grading, protected tree removal, and dirt haul certificate, subject to the subject, to, subject to the conditions listed in the certificate for APNs 046-162-010, 046-162-210, 046-162-270, 046-162-280, 046-162-290, 046-184-090, 046-814, sorry, 184-046-184-110, 046-184-120, 046-184-280, 046-184-290, and 046-184-300, for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and with the conditions in the code compliance certificate.
Including the amended conditions presented tonight?
Including the amended conditions presented tonight.
And the amended findings.
And the amended findings.
Great. I would like to second that motion. Thank you, Commissioner Bundy.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey's excused, Chair Clements.
Yes. Congratulations.
To the chair, the first two motions, just to clarify, the first two motions are recommendations to the city council, and the third item is actually an action by the Planning Commission, which could be appealed to the council within 10 days by filing a written appeal with the city clerk.
Thank you. I don't know if I need to read that out, if that's on the next screen, that the third item can be appealed after today's decision for up to 10 days, and the appeal would be to the city council for that to be reheard. Thank you very much, Greg. Okay. Congratulations. Thank you very much for your presentation, I really appreciate it. Okay, we are on to item 8, reports, correspondence, and general information. 8A, a report on recent city council actions, including the adopted 2025 strategic plan.
Yes, that is my, that's my update for the recent actions, and the council did adopt the strategic plan that they had, have been working on for the past few months with staff.
Wonderful. Thank you. Andrea, would you mind sending that link out to the commissioners? That would be wonderful to not hand for it. Thank you. Great.
You'll find a lot of items that'll be coming before you at some point on the plan.
Yes, exactly. Very consistent with what we'll be seeing. Item 8B, the Planning and Transportation Commission, any comments or reports from commissioners? No? Okay, thanks. Item C, any correspondence, Andrea?
None at this time.
Thank you. And item 8D, thank you, Lisa, planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
Sure. So your next regular meeting is May 5th at 7:00 PM, and at that meeting, we have scheduled the 2045 General Plan Reset Recommendation to City Council, as well as the RMMU, so multi-family mixed-use, excuse me, objective design standards recommendation to council as well.
Okay, so that's May 7th, yeah?
May...
Is that what you said?
5th, sorry.
May 5th, Monday.
Yes.
Sounds good. General Plan Reset. And with that, I believe we're adjourned. Thank you all for being here tonight.